Good evening. It's seven o'clock, and I'd like to start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is February 1st, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I have a correction under Item D where it lists people that were in favor of the historic preservation list. Laura Huth, she was definitely spoke against the ordinance, so she should be moved down to the last paragraph.
Laura Huth was against the ordinance.
Are you sure, Bill?
Oh, yeah, we were.
I was sure because I was shocked.
There was also a gentleman who spoke in favor of the ordinance, but in a sarcastic way, and I don't know what category he's in.
That's a special category called sarcasm. Okay. Any other additions or corrections?
Yeah, just for consistency on the last page, Item 3, I'm the only one with the first name listed in the vote, so it's fine by me, but it just seemed a little odd.
Okay. Is that duly noted by the clerk?
Strike my first name, I think, there, just to be consistent with everybody else.
That's a political mistake, Charlie. It's a sign of affection from your constituents if they call you by first name.
Yeah, well, that's what I like to go by.
Okay. If there are no further additions or corrections, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And Mr. Madigan has arrived. He already did the roll call. He missed the Pledge of Allegiance, too. Okay, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Mayor?
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, following adjournment, I'm going to run through a draft version of my slide presentation on my recent fact-finding trip to California.
Okay.
It's related to bicycling.
All right.
Does it involve beer?
No, there isn't a single beer in any of the pictures. I know. Nor pie, nor pie.
Breweries or anything?
Okay, we can do that, but that'll be after the regular meeting. Okay. Petitions and communications, anybody who would like to address the Urbana City Council, we have these little cards at the back on that little table right in front of the door. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood do not wish to speak at this time, but for the record, they are continuing their concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And Spencer Haydery, is that correct? Okay.
It's been a while, but I just wanted to say, I just came from the gun violence town hall, and that was really good. So I saw Alderman Ammons there, and please extend my kudos to the representative for coordinating that, because that was very poignant, and it was a great way to get the community involved in that discussion. But besides that, in terms of the student senate, we've been working on a series of lobby days, addressing a wide variety of issues, and one of them includes a student access bill, and I saw that Mayor Pressing is an official supporter of that. I just wanted to personally commend you for the work that you're doing, because if this bill passes, it will allow 1,500 students throughout the state of Illinois that are on documented access to resources to attain affordable education. But other than that, we're really focusing on lobbying efforts, so just wanted to give you a quick update. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Spencer, I assume you're lobbying for a budget?
Yes, among other things.
What are some of the other things?
MAP in particular, because the whole fiasco with the governor in terms of getting MAP funding through is just causing a lot of our students at the University of Illinois a lot of distress, because right now the university is honoring the funding, but we don't know for how long, especially with the budget crisis. So MAP is definitely a priority. That's pretty much it, besides the access bill and the budget.
Well, thank you very much for doing that work with the legislature. Aaron?
Thank you for attending the event, as well as coming here. We missed you. We were wondering what happened to you. And it was something else about the MAP grants. Is there something else that, what are some particular, you said the university is honoring them, but there's no date as to how long that's going to last? Is there anything like this that you all have found in the past or in history, how long they've honored something like this, or is this just unprecedented?
This is pretty unprecedented. This is the longest point in Illinois state history that we've gone without a budget, so there's really no precedent for this. And I for one appreciate the fact that the university is honoring MAP funding, and so do the students that are on it.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to say to the listeners, the council and stuff, the conversation around the gun violence, there was Linda Turnbull was there to represent the young man Rashidi Overstreet, who was killed. He was 40 years old, a security guard at the banner, I mean, excuse me, Douglas Library. And a lady, my mom is known for years from Chicago, Delphine Cherry, she lost two children to gun violence in Chicago. A very compelling story, just really tear-jerking story, heart-wrenching story. She was pregnant with the son who was killed when he was 20, when her daughter was killed, when she was 16. So it's just really terrible what they're going through, and they were just trying to share the impact of this violence, the gun violence, and what it has, how it affects the community as well as the families. A lady named Mary Kay was there, her daughter went to North, was it Northern or?
Yes.
It was one of the Illinois universities, and she was killed by a stray bullet as well, or a shooting on campus or something like that. But there were members from the NRA who were there, and I had to leave early, so I didn't get a chance to see the rest of the discussion, but hopefully it's something that's fruitful that can come out of it. But it was a very important discussion. I'm glad to see that you were there.
Thank you.
Just wanted to report that to you, since you brought it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, reports of special committees, reports of officers. Libby Tyler, Community Development Director.
Last week, Brandon Boy sent out the Business and Development Report for January, and I just wanted to bring the new format to your attention. We're trying to make it more of a community-wide format with announcements of events and a bit more graphic and streamlined, so any feedback on the format, be happy to hear that. And I know that they're working on an annual report for you as well, so hopefully next week or the following we'll have that. In terms of upcoming events, this week, Wednesday and Thursday, there is a screening of a film that has relevance to issues of development and gentrification. It's called My Brooklyn: Demystifying Gentrification, and talks about the forces reshaping the director's neighborhood along the lines of race and class. The Wednesday showing is at 6:00 PM at the Champaign Public Library. It will be followed by a community panel to discuss recent development trends in Champaign, Urbana, and I will be participating in that panel. Then on Thursday at 7:30, Thursday, February 18th, it will be shown in Plim Auditorium on campus in Temple Beul Hall, and that will be followed by a Q&amp;A with the film's director. Next week, next Tuesday, we have our Business and Development Luncheon. Used to call it the Developers Roundtable, but we broadened it to the business community as well, and we'll be talking about our new development incentives, decreasing costs in commercial, residential, and solar projects. And that will be next Tuesday, the 23rd, at the Urbana Civic Center at noon. Next Wednesday, February 24th, 7:00 to 8:00 PM in the Lewis Auditorium at the Urbana Free Library, will be a workshop, and this will be How to Research Your Old House. The presenters will be our Chair of our Historic Preservation Commission, Alice Novak, and Bryan Adams, who is on campus, and it's co-sponsored by the City of Urbana and the Preservation and Conservation Association of Champaign County. We also have an upcoming Citizen Planner Workshop, legal and procedural topics. This will be in April 27th, from 4:45 to 8:00 PM at the City View Banquet and Meeting Center at the Illinois Terminal, and Lori Pearson will be sending out information about that. Also, we are still looking and open for community volunteers who want to be involved in the regional, planning for the Regional Neighborhood Networks Conference, which is coming up in the fall. The dates will be kind of a welcoming reception, Thursday, September 29th. Conference is all day Friday, September 30th, and then the morning of Saturday, October 1st. And this is a rotating conference among several states where the focus is on neighborhood networks and neighborhood groups, and the conference is being co-sponsored by the City of Champaign, the City of Urbana, and in particular, our Grants Management Division, Kelly Murkowski, has been working with the Neighborhood Services Division in Champaign. We have a number of Urbana participants on the organizing committee from our different neighborhood groups, but if you know of anyone, or if you'd like to participate, this would be, it's not too late to join. We have subcommittees, and it's really been a great committee and a great effort so far. Any questions?
The time for the Thursday showing at Temple Beul again, for My Brooklyn?
That is at 7:30.
7:30, okay.
Yeah, 6:00 PM on Wednesday in the Champaign Public Library, 7:30 Thursday at Plim Auditorium.
You said Hickory River is supplying the food?
Don't bring food into the Champaign library, so.
I was talking about for the Temple Beul.
Yeah, for Plim, no, I think you'll have to fend for yourselves, but.
Diane?
First of all, thank you for the new format. It's very useful. And one site that's not on there that I was wondering about is the Hanford Inn site. I know it's not a city-owned property, but it's such a potentially significant development. I wondered if we could get an update on that once in a while, maybe not every month, but.
Yeah, that's.
We haven't heard anything about it for a while.
We'll add that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Libby. I have a report. The whole 911 system, the state law creating it was based on the idea that we want the quickest response to emergencies. So in that law, it says if two cities are right next to each other, that they need to have an agreement, and that whichever department responds should be based on the closest responder rather than the political jurisdiction. So we've had an agreement with Champaign, and also we have an agreement with the university, and it dates back to 1997, and we have always had the closest responder. We have a fire station on the campus, and that can get to many properties in Champaign. We are supposed to get to the university properties, because we have a contract with them, but we have, some university things are closer to a Champaign fire station, so historically, we've done it by whatever the closest responder is. And Champaign recently said that they wanted to change this and have all the private-owned properties be taken care of by the Champaign Fire Department if they're on that side of the boundary. So we have responded to their suggestion. I have a letter to Deb Finan, and then we have a letter from Chief Nightlinger to the Fire Chief Gary Ludwig in Champaign, and we have also a legal analysis by our attorney, Jim Simon, sent to Fred Stavens in Champaign. And if you flip back to the end of the report from Chief Nightlinger, we have average campus response times, and the ones that are, where Champaign Fire Department is closest, and they can do it in the least amount of time, are highlighted under CFD, and under UFD is the ones that are closer to the Urbana station on campus, and then the difference in the times there. So what we wanted to do was come to a meeting of the minds with Champaign about dividing up the properties based on what the best service for that property would be. So I'm just giving you this as background. It's going to be apparently in the News Gazette tomorrow, and I don't want to have a big discussion about it right now, but I want you to have all the information that we've put together. So I hope we can work this out with Champaign to everybody's satisfaction. Are there any other reports of officers? Bill Gray, Public Affairs.
Just wanted to note that the Municipal Electric Irrigation Quarterly Report is in the packet. Put it also on your dais tonight, and if you have questions, Scott Test is here to help answer that. And secondly, there's also a memo about the temporary speed reduction in anticipation of the unofficial St. Patrick's. We've been doing this historically, and perhaps the memo hasn't gotten to you in past years, I'm not sure, but anyway, I thought I'd get it out early, and it's for this period of time on Green Street, where it would be temporarily 25 mile per hour.
Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, thanks for the memo, because I believe that with the MCOR project, Green Street, from Lincoln to Wright, is slated to become 25 miles an hour, right?
That's our intention. It hasn't gone to Traffic Commissioner or City Council yet.
I was just wondering if now's not the time to just go ahead and make this a 25 mile an hour area, and I'm looking at Mike Madigan as Chair of the Traffic Commission. Might as well, frankly, I think 25 miles an hour along there is probably better anyway, given the number of pedestrians and such. So I would encourage moving to 30 and just making this permanent.
Isn't it true that the rest of the campus is 25?
Correct. Yes. There'll be a staff report to the commission, and then there will probably be a recommendation of 25, and they would come to council, but that hasn't happened yet, obviously, so.
Is it 25 on Lincoln?
No, it's 30.
Okay.
30 on Springfield, Green, and Lincoln.
Okay. Any other questions? Eric?
Yeah, I would just make a comment on Springfield. I think that because of the many pedestrian crossings on Springfield, and those crossings are not, some of them are not really well-lit, so at night, I mean, I think it really is, I don't feel safe as a driver, or I don't feel safe from hitting somebody if I'm driving more than 25 through there. So I would urge staff and Traffic Commission to seriously consider 25 on Springfield through campus.
Charlie?
Yeah, and I guess I agree totally with that, and I think the sooner the better. Let's just get it done. You know, that way we can have a consistent university zone.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much. Any other reports of officers? Okay, we will move on to new business. We have three items. First is Resolution Number 2016-02-006R, a resolution of protest against a proposed amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance to allow a parking lot as a special use in the county CR Conservation Recreation District.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As you noted, this is one of those resolution of protest cases where you can vote to defeat a resolution of protest if you are for the legislation. And this is a Champaign County zoning ordinance amendment, which may impact the city, and probably would, because it's adjacent to the city. So the county zoning administrator is proposing to make three changes to the county zoning ordinance, basically to allow for parking in the CR district and only on the property which hosts the county fairgrounds. The, let's see. Oh, I forgot to mention, yes, if the council adopts a resolution of protest, this would require the county board to have a three-fourths supermajority in order to approve that amendment. So the three sections that are being proposed to be changed in the county zoning ordinance, the first is Section 6.1.3, and this is a standard condition for a fairground as a special use in the county. And this change would add a special condition, basically, that says when the county board looks at a special use to allow fair, they need to look at site design, land management, and stormwater design concerns, which is not currently in the ordinance. The second change looks at Part 4, I'm sorry, Section 421, and it talks about how parking lots and related passenger waiting areas can be allowed as a second principal use in the county CR district. Otherwise, no more than one principal use is allowed under county zoning. 5.2 adds parking lots and parking lot and related passenger waiting buildings as a special use to the table of uses in the county, only on the fairgrounds. Section 6.1.3 would also add special conditions for a special use of parking lots, basically just to say a parking lot and additional, basically just parking lots can be a part of a special use in this location on the fairgrounds, and they can be used by agencies other than the Fairgrounds Association. And also, this would require traffic impacts to be considered. So a little context here, the county fairgrounds has a large parking lot on the southwest corner of their site, and it's served them well during the county fair and during agricultural events throughout the year. It's used for onsite parking. For other events, such as the CarEx, Crazy K, it's used for onsite parking, but most days of the year, this parking is used for Carl Hospital, which is a couple blocks down the road, mostly by their employees. So this is something that, it's considered a second principal use by the county zoning administrator, and he says they've never officially approved the use of parking, and also there are some accessory buildings, little bus shelters in the parking lot, which Carl has a shuttle that goes up and picks up the employees, so those accessory structures were never allowed. So really, this amendment is about allowing for those, and also for allowing for expansion of the parking lot, because they are at capacity. And, let's see. So one of the key impacts of this amendment is it would take water quality into account as well as traffic impacts. Currently, the parking lot just sheet flows into sewer that drains straight into the Crystal Lake there. So the proposed expansion would allow for installation of a stormwater detention area, which would capture water, allow pollutants to settle out of it, and then release it into Crystal Lake at a controlled rate. When we presented this resolution to the Plan Commission, there was a little confusion about parking lot versus parking garage. As originally proposed, this would allow for a parking lot or garage, but there were concerns about that at Plan Commission, so we talked to the county zoning administrator, and he's agreed to amend the amendment, basically to separate parking lot from parking garage. Just so there's no question about it, that this would only allow for a parking lot expansion at the fairgrounds and not for a parking garage. Talked about the zoning impacts. Basically, so this would allow for a special use to expand the parking at the fairgrounds, and at that point, the city would take a detailed look at the proposed expansion. We've taken a look at it, like a preliminary look, and given some initial feedback, but if this amendment were to pass at the county board, then we would take a more detailed look and give them detailed input about the stormwater detention and mitigating impacts on residents that are nearby in terms of putting up headlights screens and landscaping, those types of things. And so that would be for a special use, a future special use permit application to the county board. And for special use permits, the city does not have a protest like we do for zoning changes, but the county does always take our comments into account, just as they have with this very amendment. So recommendations. The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend that council defeat a resolution of protests for the proposed text amendment, upon the condition that the amendment is changed to explicitly disallow parking garage. That change has since been made, so the staff recommendation is to defeat the resolution of protests as presented in the memo.
Okay. Diane?
I move to defeat Resolution Number 2016-02-006R.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Madigan. Question? Charlie?
I was hoping to go ahead and include the language that the Plan Commission included here about the parking garage. I don't know if that.
Has that already been done, Jeff? Did you say that?
So that has been proposed by the county zoning administrator. It has not been read into the record yet. We're between meetings at the county.
So we should have our motion be the same as the Plan Commission?
Yes.
So I would agree. Yeah, friendly amendment would be to include the language of, upon condition that the amendment is changed, explicitly disallow parking garage in the CR district.
I'll accept that.
Mr. Madigan, is that okay with you?
Well, no. At this point, no. I'm wondering what the objection is to allowing the possibility of a parking garage. I'm not understanding the difficulty here with a parking garage.
Perhaps Jeff Angstrom could explain.
I think their concern was just it would allow too high a level of traffic, and the heights could be unsightly, so aesthetics and traffic.
So we're talking about aesthetics here within literally a view of parking garages that have been approved by the City of Urbana already and are in existence.
Yes.
Okay. Charlie and then Aaron?
No, those parking garages.
No, those parking garages are separated by three blocks of houses. So...
I wouldn't agree with that at all. I mean, I'd...
You're next to the, you're next to Crystal Lake Park and houses on both the south and the west of the park area.
So what we're obstructing the view of would be parts of the county fairgrounds. Parts of the county fairgrounds. There's no, there's no particular scenic value. Well, I've just, I don't understand why we would hamstring the county fair association if they were wanting to put up a two or three-floor parking garage. So if I'm, I seconded the motion, and if someone wants to, if we need to have a roll call vote to, you know, to overcome that, that's fine, but I don't see any kind of particular, I don't see any reason why we would not allow the property owner to potentially improve their property to their benefit, to their financial benefit. And the fact of the matter is, I, well, I would ask Jeff, how many of the properties adjacent to where a parking garage would be are already optioned by Carl?
Yeah, the city has a development agreement with Carl, and they cannot purchase properties north of, I think it's Church or Hill. So none of the adjacent properties to the fairgrounds are owned by them.
Okay. So none, and on that entire street?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I just, I persist in my objection to limiting the county fair association to improve their property.
Would you like to withdraw your second?
No.
Okay, because we have a friendly amendment, which I don't think you approve of, or you're just, you're just seconding...
That would be correct. So I would take, I guess it would take a roll call vote to overcome that, correct?
We'd take a motion to add this to, a motion to amend the motion would be the appropriate thing. So Diane, and you've made a motion, the friendly has not been accepted, so I will move to amend the motion to include the, upon condition that the amendment is changed, explicitly disallow parking garage in the CR district.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Aaron?
So to all the young men who are here to watch tonight, learn Robert's Rules of Order, okay? So I'd like to respond to, this is literally in my backyard, so I don't want to see it in that particular location. I enjoy the forestry area of the county fairgrounds, and my son and I spend ample hours over there, hanging out, riding his horse, and dealing with the county fair and all those different things. So it would be quite unsightly for me to see a parking garage go in that particular area. I don't even want to see them put a parking lot there any further, but I understand that they need one. I was at the meeting, I think Libby and some other people were there when I met them at Carl to discuss this, so I was aware that something like this was coming. But there's a lot of agricultural activities that take place right there where this areas, this lot is going to be put now. So I'm wondering where, what's going to happen to all the shows that take place and the space when it's used? So it would be quite unsightly. I know the people who live right across the street from there. I don't think it would be an ideal place for a parking garage, and I'm glad that the commission caught that so it wouldn't end up being something like that. I would, yeah, that's all I really wanted to say.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'll point out that this is an area zone conservation and recreation and could potentially revert back to conservation recreation should the fair, should the fair board decide to move the fair to another location. That's been talked about over time. You could easily expand Carl Park, oh, I'm sorry, Crystal Lake Park into here. There could be some additional housing development and so on. So I think that as long as it's zoned CR, it is inappropriate to put a parking deck there, and that's why I think it's important to approve this amendment.
Okay. Dennis and then Bill?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I did ask about the allowance of the parking garage, too. I didn't really appreciate that either. It seems like the county board and even Carl agree that 203 additional parking spots would be adequate, and so we don't have to think about, you know, 700 extra spots or something like that in a structure that's going to be built or would potentially be built. And I think, yeah, it's not, it would be more in line with keeping it as a conservation district, not to have additional large buildings added, which would be more appropriate in a B3, you know, or industrial location. So the one thing I did ask, I would like to ask is, it wasn't real clear how access to 10 units of parking that were on the most eastern edge of the parking lot would be accessed. It looks like there's a separation on the plat map, and I don't know if this is a final map for the, to illustrate the parking layout or not, but there's a, there are 10 spaces on the eastern edge which are separated from the main parking lot by a thin, perhaps it's a drainage ditch? And I'm just wondering how access, if this is an enclosed lot, how would one access those 10 spots? And you are, and on the map, it's at the bottom of this map because this map is side turned, and it's not turned to the north. Yes, those are the ones. So how does, does one access it off of the main road and not from the parking entrance? How's that laid out? Can you figure that out?
So this map shows several layers. It shows existing conditions as well as future conditions. I believe this is all going to be paved as a flat surface.
Yeah. All right. So it looks like there's a, well, okay, maybe I don't have to worry about this at this point. The other thing I wondered about was, was there any thought to extend the north-south road that is the main feeding road into the parking, the parking lot that's in the southwest corner to the north into this lot to combine them in a logical manner? It looks like right now they're separated by several different islanded triangular roundabouts or passageways, and I'm just sort of wondering if it wouldn't make more sense to take the north-south road that is seen in the colored map that precedes that exhibit, straight north into the parking lot? But again, it's probably a, maybe has to do with how much money they have to realign the roadway in the fairgrounds to make it more logical?
I believe that road would go straight into this entrance here.
Mm-hmm.
So again, north is to the right.
So it would curve to the left, it looks like, to the west slightly, just to get into the lot?
Yes.
But they're still not going to remove the triangle of trees that are right there at that intersection?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, just was looking at it for common sense.
All right.
Bill?
Yeah, how would this impact the current county stormwater management ordinance and how that applies to this parcel?
I'm not sure how that applies exactly. I just know it would give additional consideration to stormwater management during the special use hearing.
So the existing county stormwater management ordinance would still apply to this parcel?
Yes, it would not negate it.
Because according to that, the storage requirements for the detention would be much higher for all of the parking. Are they just calculating that quarter acre or half acre, whatever it is, dry bottom detention where there's already a berm that slows down the water? Are they just calculating that on the new surface of parking?
I'm not sure.
And section 613 that we're supposed to approve as part of this text amendment, where it says site design, land management, and stormwater management, et cetera, that seems like it would be redundant with the stormwater management ordinance. So by putting that in there, my worry is that we're saying this applies and not the stormwater management ordinance. Is that the way you would read it?
No, I would read it that this is just like an additional reminder. Just, I think this is something they added because it wasn't a consideration during the original approval back in, I think, 70-something. But they would both apply.
And then as part of that stormwater management ordinance, it says for parcels of more than five acres, they can't add more than 16% impervious. This is a 50-some acre parcel, and it's already got nine acres of parking, which is more than 15%, so, or 16%. So it sounds like there would be some kind of variance requirement. I'm not sure I'm ready to vote on this if we can't find out the answers. There's no zoning people here from county today?
Let's see, I don't think so. No.
And then the detention that's proposed is also in the hundred-year floodplain. Is that a problem?
Maybe Mr. Gray could speak to that.
I'd have to check about a where that's in the floodplain, so I don't know. Maybe one of your questions, though, I know that this red box area for proposed parking, that necessary stormwater detention requirement would be incorporated, as I understand it, into the existing detention area or expanding it. So that was my understanding of the engineer was proposing to handle the stormwater in that fashion.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've been by there, I walk by there almost every weekend. I know there's a berm along the fence there that's about three feet high, so it'll probably require minimum excavation there, but they will be redirecting the water into that area. So hopefully it would filter it some. I mean, my main concern is water quality for the lake, and I don't see that this is improving it a whole lot, although it's probably better than nothing. I don't know why nothing was done earlier when they paved the lot. I remember walking through there in the 80s, and it was grass. It was just, you know, it was all grass, you just parked on the grass. It was gravel, dry, everything was grass. It's been done in the past 25 years, maybe they didn't have the ordinance at the time. So I guess I'd want to find out a little bit more about that. How would this water, these state and federal water quality standards that we would be approving in this, how would that be monitored? How's that enforced?
I think it would mostly be looked at at the time of design. I don't know if there would be specific monitoring requirements or not. Do you know, Bill?
I do not.
Charlie and then Eric?
Jeff, what's the schedule of this for the county? When are they addressing it?
Let's see. So they just had it, on February 8th, they had their first reading at the Environment and Land Use Committee. I think they were holding it over two weeks, and then it'll go to the next county board, which would be early March.
I'm just wondering, okay, so I think it would be appropriate, if Bill wants to hold this up, to vote on the amendment that I proposed to the main motion and then defer the main motion to the next council meeting, if you indeed want to hold it up. It sounds like there's, our next meeting would be on the first of, the first of March? Or second of March?
No, 29th is a Monday, so it would be right at 6:00.
March 7th. We won't be meeting again until March 7th. I don't know if that's in time or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure which nights county boards are on. Do we know?
Do you know if, would they be applying for the special use at the same, do you know how much longer they would be, it would be before they applied for the special use if we approved the text amendment?
I'd imagine it would be fairly quick, but not at the same...
I think most of my concerns would be addressed in objecting to the special use, not necessarily the text amendment, unless this text that we approved somehow exempts them from conforming to this county stormwater management ordinance.
No, it would not exempt them.
Okay, so I guess I probably don't have a problem with the text amendment itself, but I think when it comes to the approval of the special use, they're definitely, I'd like, we won't have any approval over that, but that's where, most of what my questions are. I guess the other thing that we could suggest is on those grass strips that run across the lot, that currently the water flows through those, they have these kind of concrete raceways through those where the water comes through. If those could be turned into some kind of saturation areas or infiltration strips, that could help probably improve water quality, too. So maybe I should just, I won't hold this up tonight, but I guess maybe if I submit my written comments, you could make them known, or I could submit them directly to the county board or whatever you want to do.
Definitely, yeah. I think if you gave them to city staff, we could incorporate them to our main comments.
Okay. Eric Jacobson?
So I guess I for one, I don't know how other people feel, but I for one would like it noted that I share Bill's concerns. So, and if others want to state that also, maybe it'll carry more weight if there's a list of council people who, you know, I mean, Bill's the author, it should be, you know, put forth as such, but if other people also share those concerns, that'll perhaps give it more weight.
Bill, is it possible that they could use rain gardens as part of this to filter the water?
I'm not familiar enough with their requirements to say that's possible. I don't know. I mean, we could suggest those things.
Okay, do you want to, we could vote on this motion, and then we could have a list of suggestions to vote on? Okay, we have a motion to defeat the protest, and with the condition that the parking garage not be allowed. Does that cover it?
No, we have to do, we have to vote on the amendments separately.
The amendment to not allow the parking garage?
Oh, that's going to be a separate thing?
Yeah, that's, that's...
Okay, two different motions then. First is a motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson, to defeat the protest.
No, to amend the motion.
To amend the motion, okay. All right, now you got me clear on this. To amend the motion, which is already the motion that was made by Marlin and seconded by Madigan?
Right.
Okay.
Got a question.
All right, and Mr. Ammons has a question while...
Actually, Mr. Madigan has a question. So Jeff, just real quickly, with regard to the language about parking garage prohibition, is that within the proposed parking area, or is that within any parking area that is designated at this point?
That is, yes, within the CR district, blanket.
So that would be any of this parking?
Correct.
Okay. So I think we ought to just consider that if we're going to, and I have no idea if Carl's interested or if the, if the county fair association is interested or not, but vertical parking, vertical parking garage within immediate proximity of Carl could obviate the need for additional surface parking in the proposed area. It could obviate the need for covering grass in the future. So that's just something that I think ought to be considered.
Did you want to say something else, Charlie?
Yeah, I think any parking deck that Carl wants to do should be done as part of their main campus, not, not in, away from the, away from the main campus and impacting neighborhoods and conservation recreation areas.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the original motion, and the amendment is to, do you say what the amendment is, Mr.?
Is to include, upon condition...
Is to include the language, upon condition that the amendment is changed, explicitly disallow parking garage in the CR district.
In the CR district, okay. So this is an amendment to the motion. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment passes, and so now we have the resolution... Okay, that amendment passes, and so now we have the resolution as amended, uh, what you just added, but the resolution is to defeat the protest.
Mayor?
Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, one of the things that attracts me to this is the same issue that, that Bill and Eric have echoed. Uh, this is a, an opportunity to include, uh, modern stormwater management and, and everything related to that. It could be bioswales, it could be rain gardens, whatever it takes, uh, and we, we should encourage those sorts of things. The idea of, of turning those gutter ways right now into bioswales is a very attractive one. I think that's a great idea that should be shared with them. So I view this, uh, this amendment to the, to the county, uh, as a county zoning ordinance to be a really forward-thinking, though belated action. I know that the quality of Crystal Lake has suffered, and, and there are sections of the park where, where, that are, uh, sections of the lake that are contaminated, uh, when they've done some water samples. So, um, part of that is, has been from the runoff that's come into the lake from that end of the park.
Okay, now we're voting on the amended motion, um, submitted by Marlin, seconded by Madigan. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. We will move on to ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash zero-two dash zero-ten. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Urbana, Illinois. And this is a request by the City of Urbana zoning administrator to change the zoning of a number of properties in this city.
Good evening, this is Plan Case Twenty-two Seventy-One. M-six. Twenty-two Seventy-One, M-sixteen. Uh, this is a omnibus of a map amendment to change zoning for ten different properties throughout the city so that their zoning will match their land use as well as their future land use designation in the comprehensive plan. So, over the last year, staff has observed a number of properties that are not, not properly zoned from what their current use is, or from what their intention is in the city's comprehensive plan. So we are proposing this multi-part map amendment that would change the zoning to reflect more, its use more appropriately. Uh, the vast majority of these properties are city-owned or publicly owned in, through one entity or another. Only one of them is a private property, and with that private property, we've been in contact with the property owner, has his full support and cooperation, or their full support and cooperation. So how I'll do this is I will just go through each property individually and with, uh, through each exhibit, starting with, uh, Exhibit A, which is for fourteen oh seven North Lincoln Avenue. Scroll down to that exhibit. And with each property, I'll state its existing land use and zoning, and then its future land use designation. So I'll go through kind of the format with each of the ten properties. So fourteen oh seven North Lincoln Avenue is currently used as a fire station. It will be indefinitely for near future. However, it is zoned R-two. Uh, its future land use designation is institutional, and for this property, we had proposed to rezone it to B-three, which would allow it to be continually, which would, uh, which has fire, uh, fire station as a permissible use. The next property is eleven, eleven oh one East University Avenue. This is-
I have a question about the, this, the North Lincoln, the fire station.
Yes.
So you said that it's, it's currently R-two, right?
Yes.
And it sounds like the, the rationale is to change it to B-three because it fits the description of the surrounding area?
No, for the, the current land, well, the, the properties to the north and the south are B-three, so it would make it contiguous in that regard. But mainly because it's used as a fire station, which really isn't a prescribed use for the R-two district. So it would make it to match, not, not so much the current area, although it certainly fits in with the, the surrounding area, but the, the property itself, it just matches it more accurately for its current use and what it will be used for, and what it's meant to be used for in the future.
So the, the fire station and then going south, there, there are no businesses there? That's not, what do you mean when you said?
Well, the B-three district allows for a wide range of uses, that some of which might be commercial, but the, that particular property is zoned for R-two, which is mostly meant for single-family homes. And it's obviously not used for single-family homes. It's just better aligns with-
Well, what I'm getting at is since, from, from that fire station and that open parcel,
Mm-hmm.
further to the west, of course, the apartments sit back in there and stuff like that. But all along there, there's a house for, that's got a long driveway that's way off, that goes west, that had a bunch of brush there. And there's another house that sits on the corner of Lincoln and, um, um, I can't recall, to call the street right there. So why wouldn't it all be R-two instead of changing it to B-three? Why not just have it be R-two?
Well, the property to the north is a vacant parcel that is being, that has the possibility of being developed into a commercial property. And, uh, equally with some of the, some of the properties to the south might be used for commercial purposes as well. So our intent is to not drastically change the nature of the corridor or of what those properties were decided upon, um, years ago, or in, you know, the, they're, for the comprehensive, for their, the comprehensive plan, you know, those properties to the south are, are also designated to be community business. They're also designated that to be that just slightly to the north. You know, there's a gas station a little further north of that vacant parcel. Our intent is to not sort of reinvent the wheel or sort of micromanage the, the use of a, that, of an entire city block of a corridor, but just to match, you know, the surrounding. If you wanted to talk about changing all that to R-two, I think that involves a greater discussion with more stakeholders and more parties than just what's currently involved.
So can you scroll, I don't know, take it up or down where you can, so everyone can follow what I'm saying and not get confused with the directions? Maybe down a little bit further for actual picture? Okay.
So just because the legend isn't, isn't visible, the red is what's zoned as, uh, B-three, and then the yellow is what is zoned as R-two, and then across the street is R-four, which is for a more dense residential, or residential zoning district, but for anyone who's watching, so, as you were.
Right, so this, this, we've got Vineyard Church to the right, and this is the fire station that you have cir, uh, in the square, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then so as you move south, the very building next to that is what?
That, I believe that's the vacant nursing home? Or Girl Scouts.
And then there's an open part, and then the street here on the corner, those are, those are houses that are there?
Yes, well, it- I believe that's-
So the Sunset, this Sunset is the street that runs east and west. Before you get to, to Vineyard Church, you know, are those atrium apartments and stuff like that, right? So directly across from Sunset, those are houses. There's a house on the corner that leads into the subdivision that's there. And then when you go south on the west side of Lincoln, there's another house there that's got a long driveway, and then you have these other spaces. So it looks to me like, I, I, maybe I'm confused on how far you're trying to, I understand that. But I know that rezoning means other stuff, okay? So I, I don't want you, and we're talking about commercial development and all that kind of stuff. And so that's going to be a concern for me in that particular area, because if you're talking about having that whole area be B-three, now you're talking about changing the dynamic for some, uh, single-family homes that are over there. So I don't know if I support that. And this, this, this red piece here is, none of that's houses. Is that right?
No, that's the, the one south apartment.
It's too far south, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so the first house is down here.
Right.
It's a block.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Okay, that's clear. That's clear, okay, I understand.
Anyone else have a question at this point? Okay, proceed.
Okay. So.
Okay, there, I see it now.
So going back to eleven oh one East University, this is part of CU MTD's headquarters. It's one of several, several parcels that make up their headquarters, that they've just put a lot of money into renovating and upgrading. The majority of the property to the east and to the west, as well as to the railroad to the south, is zoned I-N-one light, light industrial office. This particular property was zoned B-three from when it was used by, uh, commercial use that has long since left. And CU MTD is there now. They're going to be there for the indefinite future. They were supportive of rezoning this to I-N-one, so it would be consistent with its current use as well as its future designation of heavy industrial in the comprehensive plan.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And it looked like that lot actually is, um, there's a building that crosses that lot, sits on two lots, is that correct? So, so that's a really awkward event, too. You have a building that's built on two different zoning plots, and so making it consistent seems like it's really an important choice.
Or what was your-
Because I'm asking is-
Observation?
How, um, has that, has that condition existed for a long time? And was there a reason why the, was the offices there having different use earlier?
They were used by, uh, I can't remember which, what the, who the employer was. Motorola, or?
No, it's before my time here.
So, um, I would have to look further into when MTD moved into those premises and, but, uh, that's a question that predates my arrival at the city.
Mine, too, I think.
Well, then.
Michael Madigan?
So, are you saying that, that we are conforming the zoning ordinance to the use of the building? Are we retroactively approving zoning for something that was constructed in an inappropriately designated zone?
The, the use by MTD in this, on this parcel is not necessarily, uh, non-compliant or, um, is not necessarily, uh, not allowed in that, in the, the B-three district. But the, the surrounding use, uses as well as the current use by, by MTD, in the, in terms of what the, what they're doing nearby with some of the, the bus garages and everything, seems to make it more appropriate for I-N-one. So nothing's necessarily been retroactively approved or adjusted. It, the property in itself now is compliant, but this makes it just a better fit in.
Could you also tell me quickly, um, on a semi-related note? So MTD has announced that they're, uh, leasing a nearby property for eighty-five hundred dollars a month for bus driver training? Do you know where that is adjacent to this property?
I had read about that, but I hadn't, haven't been personally involved in the conversations about where that's occurring. I-
Okay.
Think Bill might be able to-
So what's the lot in between?
It's CRI. It's Community Resource Incorporated, Matt Schneider's operation. He picks up our multifamily recycling.
Okay.
So it's immediately east of his property, which is right here, where they want to use the driver training facility.
So this is the, where you've pointed the cursor is where, uh, MTD plans to pay a half a million dollars to tear down the building and then lease the property for eight thousand five hundred dollars a month for driver training, correct?
I can't speak to those numbers. All I know is this is the property that they're looking at purchasing.
All right, thank you.
That's Environmental Alley.
So anyways, continuing with the properties, as I said, it matches the future land use designation more closely. The next property is six-ten South Glover Avenue. Uh, the mobile homes displayed here have since been removed, so that overhead photo is not necessarily current.
That was a huge event.
I guess I can't appreciate. Uh, it was previously, previously zoned R-four, and it is proposed to be rezoned to I-N-one just in, to allow for its future land use designation of light industrial office as well as the intentions of the Public Works Department to utilize it for, uh, for public works, um, storage or spaces. Overall, just property be used for that. The next several properties are nine oh nine, nine eleven, nine thirteen, and nine fifteen North Lincoln Avenue. These properties are all zoned R-two, um, single-family residential. At one point, they did have single-family homes existing on them. They have, those homes have since been removed, uh, through the city's blight reduction efforts as well. So the parcels are owned, a few of them are owned by the Park District, a few of them are owned by the city, and they're leased on a long-term basis by the Park District, and they've been incorporated into King Park. This zoning would change that to Conservation, Recreation, Education, which is the zoning district that the city uses for all of its park space. So just to better match the current use as well as the future land use designation, which is park space. The, the farthest southern parcel on that property, which I believe is nine oh nine, is, does have a future land use designation of community business, but otherwise the other three are for park. Eleven oh seven East Florida is the one privately-owned parcel on, on this list. The majority of, if you look at the map in the center, the majority of the property is zoned for R-five, which is consistent with its use of multifamily apartments. And R-five is a district meant for that sort of use. The, the corner of the property, the southwest corner, right around here, is zoned for R-two, single-family residential. The southern portion of the property that contains two buildings, which are currently being leased and will continue to be leased for the indefinite future, this portion is zoned CRE for Conservation, Recreation, Education. So the, the property has existed for decades, and we're proposing to rezon the entire parcel to R-five for, for it to be consistent with, uh, the majority of what it's already zoned for. It also would match the future land use designation of multifamily. If you were to ask- multifamily. Um, if you were to ask why it was, had multiple zoning designations, uh, we looked into it, weren't able to find a reason as to why that small little corner was zoned R two and the southern part was zoned CRE. But our conversations with the property owner, uh, they were supportive of having it be consistently zoned all for R five. So five oh, five oh one East Windsor Road, uh, that's the property, that's, uh, approximately half of the property used for Meadowbrook Park. So this would rezone it from, would propose to rezone it from. It was slightly out of order there. It would propose to rezone it from, um, R one, which is single-family residential to CRE as well. Uh, the space is vacant and used for park space. And then lastly, twelve ten East University Avenue. This is a, a parcel that is zoned for, uh, CRE, but it contains the Landscape Recycling Center as well as some, some functions for the city's Arbor Division. And it's also the site of a retired landfill, so city is proposing to have this rezoned to A G. That's not the perfect district for it, but it allows, it's a little more consistent considering the fact that there's a retired landfill on the site. So. There are also some minor, there's some processing of biomass on the site, and then some, also some sales components of the recycled land mass, you know, biomass, so. Uh, the Plan Commission overheard the case and unanimously approved forwarding the multi-part map amendment with the recommendation of approval. They had a few questions just regarding the property values, if any of those were adversely affected. Um, the city, in our, in our analysis, we concluded that, uh, all these properties are, the vast majority of these properties are publicly owned, that they would not be adversely affected just because the, their proposed rezoning is designed to match their current land use. Uh, we felt that also with the LaSalle criteria, that all of those criteria were adequately met, one of those being how the property values are affected. I can address each criteria individually for any property if you would like me to. But otherwise, the Plan Commission forwarded with a vote for approval, so if there are any other questions you have regarding the.
I hate to ask you to go back, but I'm going to ask you to go back.
By all means.
To the nine oh nine to nine fifteen North Lincoln. Just, I'm, I'm looking at the, um, uh, community business, if you scroll.
Mm-hmm.
Keep going. Okay, you've got a, a parcel labeled community business, which is the vacant nursing home, but it's actually zoned R five, medium-high density to resi, medium-high density residential. So is this intended to be neighborhood business or?
Well, are you talking about the zoning or the future land use?
I guess I'm talking about the zoning. Doesn't that mean that's the future land use?
The zoning is the official designation of what, and, you know, is binding to what is or is not allowed to, to be done on that property. The future land use is more just in the, the comp plan that designates what ought to be considered for future use there at that site. It, it has different meanings for what's allowed on the site than what the zoning allows. Um, if you're asking as to the, the nursing home to the south?
Yeah.
Or the, the, I think it's vacant now, why that's zoned R five. I mean, that, that, even though there is a, the nursing home might be a business or a not, not-for-profit entity or whatever, that's, that is considered a under, under zoning, that is considered a residential usage. Um, the property just immediately north to there, even though that was, I think that was a single-family home at one point, and even though it's, it's park space now, that it was probably determined to be made available for, um, you know, community business if, uh, that, that space were redeveloped in the future. Because the zoning might have been different from the future land use designation, that's not uncommon necessarily, where you'll find some parts of the city where the, the zoning is for a residential use, but then the future land use calls for it to be something completely different. That's just to guide what future policy ought to be.
But at this point, it's still zoned R five?
Yes.
Okay. Dennis Roberts.
Yeah. When you, when I, since we're looking at these maps a little bit, when I noticed that there are overlaps where, uh, maybe it's an inaccuracy, but if I, if you look at, for example, Exhibit F, five oh one East Windsor Road, that's the landfill. And you, and you look at the, um.
Or do you mean the, the property and university?
Windsor Road. It's Windsor Road and Race. It's the.
Oh, okay.
It's the recycling center.
No, that's Meadowbrook Park.
Oh, this is Meadowbrook Park. Okay. I got, I can't think of the wrong. Well, then, all right. So I just, I'm looking at that map. Go, go back to it. All right. I had, I misremembered it, but, no, go back to five oh one East Windsor Road.
Okay.
That'd be the Meadowbrook Park, that's right. Um, when, when we see that the, the, the zoning area that's being considered is, doesn't match the actual lot lines, is there just like, is this just like a, a graphic, um, generality? It's not specific?
Yeah, the, in some, in some instances, the, the, some of the, the different layers of the, the digital maps are slightly off. So that might be why it looks like the, the parcel line might be off by a few millimeters, which represents however many feet on, you know, in actuality on the map. It's, it's meant to be a generality. Um, to, to have it be more specific, we'd have to go in and fix the.
Oh, all right. I just was wondering if that was like an easement area or something on the other property?
No, yeah, I would, I would point out if there were, so.
All right.
Charlie Men, Eric.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready to move approval of ordinance twenty sixteen to ten, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Urbana.
Second. Eric, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I, I'd just like a clarification, and it came up with respect to the discussion of the nine hundred block of North Lincoln. Um, and you talked about, you talked about zoning and future use. And, um, future use, it seems to me there are two, um, it seems to me there are two ways, two, two criteria to judge that. And one would be by conformity with the plan, as it now exists, or the other could be to revisit it with your professional planner's eye and say, oh, um, you know, maybe, maybe we ought to think again and, and take this opportunity for the, uh, for these lots to be up for grabs, take the opportunity to rethink what that should be. And I think this gets to the heart of, of what Diane said about the difference between our, between, um, neighborhood business and a more intense, uh, uh, business. So I guess my question is, do you have an opinion, a professional opinion about what's really best for that neighborhood and for the city?
I can say that the process at arriving, you know, what should be done for the next ten, twenty, thirty years is done, you know, that was done in two thousand and five, and it's, I think it's done best, it's obviously done best when, through the, through that process, which takes the entire city and surrounding area into the, the context of the, the current conditions and what, what the city hopes to, to see for that, for that area. So the, you know, the, the comprehensive plan is, is, is meant to be a guide for, for where you take the, the zoning for that area or, you know, for other policy decisions. And if you want to change that guide or that, that, that process, it's, you know, I think it, it works well when it's done systematically, as it's been done through the, you know, through the city's existence.
So, so, so your opinion is that, that it's best not to revisit particular properties piecemeal, but to use the, uh, comprehensive plan as, as a guide for, you know, is pretty strongly as a guy, it's sort of an originalist interpretation?
Well, it's a case by, it's probably a case-by-case basis. Uh, if you, you do things by piecemeal, you run the risk of overlooking things or, you know, I, looking at one, one area in a vacuum, it, it's, it's always good to take the entire picture into consideration, but.
Yes.
I think Libby wants to add something.
And, and that's a very good question. I agree with Chris. Um, I do remember the discussion here on the, when we were doing the comprehensive plan, which is now eleven years. So naturally, we're going to begin to see more and more deviation between what we thought the future would be back then and, and what it is today. So I think at such time as we, we evaluate the comprehensive plan, we can talk again about that stretch of Lincoln. So, um, that little piece of community business along Lincoln, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, because there's only so many, after a certain point south, there's only so many houses facing Lincoln. So it's, it's a big planning discussion to be had. And in that location, I think we, we thought, um, in the various committees, so many people involved, uh, we were looking at leaving the east stretch of Lincoln on that, you know, purely residential, and then evening out some of the commercial on the west side. So in this area, we showed it as community business. In actual fact, when some of these homes came up for sale, they were, um, purchased and, um, for the benefit of King Park. And we hadn't envisioned that when we did the comprehensive plan. So we haven't been such a parcel-specific diligent upkeep of the comprehensive plan. It's a more generalized document. But I think as we move further from its year of adoption, we're going to see more places where the uses aren't matching what's actually evolved. And so that will likely be an area that we'll want to revisit, um, when we update the comprehensive plan. So just wanted to add to what, um, Christopher said, and, and I, um, this was an opportunity we hadn't envisioned. It's been many years since we bought the properties, cleared them. It was cooperative effort with the Park District. And, um, and so this rezoning will help ensure that it remains park, you know, for, for as long as we can work with this.
Dennis?
Yeah. And since we're in the discussion mode here before we take our vote, I'd just like to reiterate again my appro, my appreciation for staff and, uh, and actually through the, the Plan Commission to remove sixteen oh three East Washington from the discussion. It was part of the omnibus package.
Yeah, I, I neglected to mention that that was originally under consideration, but because of concern, some concern expressed during the, before the Plan Commission hearing that staff, we decided to remove it because this was meant to be an inclusive amendment, not, nothing to garner any opposition or, um, differences of opinion. So, yeah.
And, and actually, we, the Lurman Neighborhood Action Committee hadn't had a chance to really even address the rezoning, uh, because it came up very kind of suddenly, and we weren't aware of it. But we've had a meeting since then. It was a very proactive, uh, meeting. Um, not only is the, is the, uh, Lurman Neighborhood Action Committee now a five oh one C three organization, but, uh, you know, it's considering doing a fundraising for the potential idea of purchasing the property or doing a long-term lease. And we had a, uh, one of our, one of the gentlemen who came to the meeting as a property owner of twelve houses in the area, you know, within about two blocks of the, the, this corner lot. And he was very interesting, his comments were very interesting. He, he, I think reiterated some of the feeling of the Lurman neighborhood that as this is a, a key, um, location at the entrance into the Lurman neighborhood area, um, it is better to leave it open and park-like than to build it up with a, uh, an apartment building to block the entrance and to make the entrance into the neighborhood even less, um, enjoyable for the residents and, you know, by view. And keeping it, keeping open space there is actually an asset to the neighborhood itself. And we appreciate having the opportunity to have the delay of the rezoning issue put off till later until perhaps we can come up with some real, uh, more concrete concept about that use. So thanks again.
Okay, we have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, finally, we have, um, two appointments I'm recommending to the Human Relations Commission, Stacy Burnett and Carol Bradford. And those terms would go through June tenth, twenty sixteen.
So moved?
Second. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
I'm going to set up, uh, my slides here for anybody who wants to stick around and watch them.